Good evening, come on in. Good evening.
Good evening.
So glad to see all of these wonderful little faces here. Everybody looks so nice. What a crowd we have. We are so happy and pleased that you are here with us at our school board meeting. I'd like to call the Bamberg County School District meeting to order for September 8th, 2025, and it is six o'clock. The first item on the agenda is the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pause for a moment of silence. Thank you. Next is approval of the agenda. Board members, you have the agenda in your packets and have had an opportunity to review the agenda. What's the pleasure of the board? Yes ma'am.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the agenda for September 8th, 2025 be presented, be accepted as presented.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion from Ms. Hurst to approve the agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Chairman, quarter, I have one small, small grammatical error. It was a lot and a lot of detail. Just one small thing, second page, letter C, seven C. I believe that Mr. Olmer stated that as part of the district's ongoing rather than has.
Ms. Bunche.
There's seven extra.
Well, this is the agenda we have gotten.
Oh, I skipped ahead. I'm so sorry. I'll try that again in a minute. I was on it.
She's very enthusiastic.
I had my note written next to it.
And we appreciate your enthusiasm.
Thank you, Chairman.
See, you got to laugh at this stuff. If you can't laugh at a school board meeting, there's no way you can laugh in a classroom. Alrighty then.
I with, should I withdraw?
Uh, you probably, yeah.
I withdraw my comment.
Alright, I think we have, I don't know what we have. I think we have a motion and a second, and the discussion has been shut down. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I hear no opposed. The agenda is passed as presented. Okey dokey then. Next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for August 4th, 2025. Do I have, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes ma'am.
I move that we accept the minutes for August 4th, 2025 as presented.
Okay. I have a, thank you. I have a motion from Ms. Hurst. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion, Ms. Bunche?
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, just as I was mentioning, under the wrong number. If you, the second page, number seven, letter C, I think it said of the word has. It's just this minor typo and should be read as as.
I'm sorry, would you please repeat?
Yes, number seven, and maybe I'm reading this incorrectly. Number seven, letter C. Mr. Olmer stated that has part of the district's ongoing. I think it should be as part.
Thank you.
Minor, minor.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Hurst, do you want to withdraw your motion and let's resubmit the motion?
May I please withdraw my motion and resubmit the motion that we approve the the minutes from our August 4th, 2025 meeting with the correction of getting rid of one H.
Okay. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? If not so, motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Bunche and Ms. Hurst. Alright, next on the agenda is our school reports. Dr. Johnson, Ms. Davis, Dr. Simmons, Ms. Edwards, Ms. Miller, and Mr. Smith, in that order. I think you have some reports for us and some introductions. We're excited about both. Dr. Johnson?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
And greetings from Demacola Elementary School. Great things are happening. We have a total of 224 students. From the first day of school to the third of this month, we only have four referrals. So we're proud of that. Also, Demacola Elementary School data, testing data. We just completed the fall 2025 iReady testing for kindergarten through fifth grade. This assessment replaces the MAP test, and both students and teachers still come to activate it to the new testing. However, the scores that we have, we feel good about them, and we feel that we can move them forward. So the adjustment, the data, student academic growth over the coming weeks. The staff will begin analyzing this data to, that we have, so we can move forward with it. You can see the attachment of the fall report of the iReady testing, and we are targeting the Stow students that are in yellow. Those are what we call our bubble students. They're only one grade below, and we feel if we target them, we can move them up. So also, Demacola Elementary School will host its annual scholastic book fair from September the 8th through the 12th, from eight o'clock to three o'clock. So anyone's welcome to come and purchase books. They're in our media center. On September the 9th, we will hold our annual grandparents day with grits for brands. I think the menu for that is grits, eggs, sausage, fruits. So the parents who come, the grandparents come in and have breakfast with their grandchild. This event provides students and families with opportunity to explore a wide variety of engagement, engaging books, and promote the love for reading. So after they finish eating breakfast, our students have a way of getting their grandparents in the book fair. So it's great. We encourage the parents, the garden, the community members to join us and help us with a foster culture of literacy and allowing students to eat breakfast with their grandparents and select books that spark their interest in reading. Okay? And that flyer is also posted with your notes. We have new employees this time?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, we have four new employees at Demacola Elementary School. First, we have Mrs. Danielle Murdock. Would you please stand? She's a fifth grade, a fifth grade teacher. She teaches ELA, reading, and social studies. She came in new but has already acclimated to teaching already. I see great things happening. She is the picture of what it means to be all hands on deck. Thank you. Bradley Banks, is he here? Okay, in his absence, Bradley Banks is our art teacher. He is not new to students. He has been an assistant coach on the Demacola High School football team for two years. The same team that defeated Burke High School last Friday night. That's the team. Yes. And then we have Joelle Lawton. He's our PE teacher. He is not new to the district. He has been substituting for the district for two years. He is also an assistant football coach on the Mighty Vikings football team. Okay, we have Betsy Walter. She, in her absence, she is the special education, multi-category, self-contained teacher. She brings a wealth of knowledge and experience from Southern California, Arizona, and Richland One School District in Columbia, South Carolina. And those are our four new teachers for this school year.
Thank you, thank you.
Dr. Johnson, can you give me Mr. Banks' first name?
Bradley.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
Y'all, welcome to our school district. Thank you for serving.
Any questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Harriet Davidson. I'm the new principal for Demacola Middle School. I've met some of you, have not met all of you, but it has been my pleasure to return home. So I will be here for Demacola Middle School. I bring your greetings from the Mighty Vikings in Denmark, the Denmark, South Carolina. We currently have 136 students, 46 sixth grade, 46 seventh grade, 44 eighth grade. So the discipline for the month of August, seven disturbing class, one dress code for phone, one fighting. Then you have your bus discipline, two fighting, one disrespectful. We too just completed our iReady diagnostic, diagnostic testing window. All students have tested, and we have begun to intervene with our interventions. They started today. Our upcoming events so far are our JV volleyball, interims that will be tomorrow. And then this past Saturday, the Vikings came to Orangeburg and they had their football jamboree.
Did you have some new staff members you wanted to introduce?
I actually shared two, Mr. Lawton. Yes, and we've already met him, and then Mr. Banks, who's not here. But those are the only two that I have.
Alright.
That's why.
Well, you're welcome to our school district. I haven't met you either. You're new.
Well, let me introduce Mr. Bradley Banks. We are excited to have him. He is teaching art for our middle school students and our elementary students. And he's doing a lot himself.
Alright. Very good. There's nothing like making an entrance. Thank you, Ms. Davis.
You're welcome. Thank you for the question.
Oh, yes ma'am.
Ton.
Absolutely.
Can you hear? Okay, so can you kind of tell us what were the four phone violations and then the bus discipline? What happened with that, please ma'am?
Absolutely. So you know, South Carolina has adopted the free focus, which means cell phones have to be powered off, placed in your book bags. So these students either did not have them powered off and/or they had them on them. And so once the phones are, you're discovered to have a phone, they are confiscated, and then the parents come out in the afternoons, and we have a meeting, and all those parents have come out, and we've met, so they sign that they understand that this is their first morning and that we will definitely abide by the free focus. That's what that was. And you asked about?
The discipline for the bus.
The bus discipline. So there was, and I cannot recall the bus number, so I apologize. But two buses were combined on one, and one of the students who typically doesn't ride that bus got in a altercation with another student. They were both suspended off of the bus per district rules and regulations.
Thank you.
Parent conferences were held before they were able to return to the bus. So yes ma'am.
Thank you.
Any other questions coming?
Thank you, Ms. Davis.
You're welcome.
It's nice to meet you.
Dr. Simmons?
Sir, Mr. Chair, members of the board, good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you so much for allowing me to be here tonight. It's good to see y'all once again in the great place we call Bamberg County. Bringing your greetings from Demacola High School and sharing with you the following information. Our current enrollment as of September 3rd is 171 students. Ninth grader, 52, 10th grade, 41, 11th grade, 35, and the senior class has 43 students. The discipline incidents you see there, those numbers are fairly low considering we're a high school where kids are very busy quite often. So we're glad to see that that number is not extremely high. Good with that. We have a few events that have transpired over the last few days, and we have some that are forthcoming. Student government elections we had on the 4th, and that went really well. I think kids are glad to have been elected by their classmates to serve in various roles, and we're excited to have students sign up or run for election and be elected. So we're grateful for that. Interim reports and our parent conferences will be held tomorrow from 5:00 PM to 6:00 PM. College application day is on the 10th, which is this Wednesday. The CSRA college night is this Thursday, where our kids will be traveling. Most of the kids in our senior class and a few juniors will be traveling to Augusta for the CSRA college night. Our school improvement council meeting, the next meeting is September the 25th. First court exams are September 30th through October 1st. I should mention, in light of my colleagues mentioning that they had iReady. The high schools have chosen not to use iReady. We're going to continue to use Mastery Connect. And we will begin the Mastery Connect benchmarks on September 15th. Now, it'll last from September 15th, at least the window is from September 15th until September the 26th. You see here some school goals we've established for the year based upon our performance on last year's in the course exams. These are the goals that we have set. It's my firm belief that if you don't have a goal, then you'll just do anything. So this is a way of focusing us on establishing some concrete goals that we want to work toward that give us some definitive information at the end of the year that says whether we've met the goal or not. I'd like to take this opportunity now to introduce seven of my new staff members. I should note that there are two other persons who have yet to arrive, but they will be here when they can get everything resolved and get here on site. Okay? With that being said, I'd like to introduce Dr. Jonathan Murdock. He is our media specialist. We also have Ms. Maria Alexandrine Revis. We have Ms. Tasha Hickson Osborne, social studies. Ms. Bailey Barnado, agricultural science. Ms. Jacqueline Banks, our school counselor. Mr. Willie Ferguson, a parent professional. And lastly, Ms. Beverly Sanders. And it goes without saying that we're certainly excited to have new persons, new blood, fresh blood at Demacola High School. We're excited to have them here. They're doing a phenomenal job, and I really think that this is the year that Demacola really gets to the next level by virtue of persons that we brought in this year. So we're excited. I'm sure they'll answer any questions you may have at this time.
I have one.
Yes ma'am.
For the school improvement council, what time is that?
3:30.
I also have a question.
Sure.
Is it possible that we could have some of the student government members come up and meet us one of our onboard meetings?
Sure. Just tell me where, we'll make it happen.
Sounds good.
They were just elected. They were elected. The announcements were made today. So let's give them a chance to get their feet wet.
Yeah.
Then we'll have them go.
Sounds good. Thank you.
My pleasure. Any other questions? Anyone else? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Our enrollment is 682. I'm not going to break down the numbers. You have them in front of you, but you can see. Our discipline, sad to say, we had 10 discipline referrals for the month of August. Our student team, but we are doing iReady, but we just finished it at the time the board reports should do. I did not have it compiled, but y'all can have it next month. Our upcoming events tomorrow, interims will be issued, and we will have our Title I parent engagement meeting from 6:00 to 7:00 PM in the cafeteria. And then on Tuesday, September 23rd, we have our SIC and PTO meeting beginning at 5:30 at RCS. As far as our new staff, Laura Bush is our art teacher. Our music teacher. Angela Moore is one of our school counselors. Ms. Jordan Griffin is one of our new second grade teachers. And not with us tonight. I share her with Demacola Elementary School. We hired a new gifted and talented teacher, Ms. Randy Wild, but she's not with us tonight. Any questions for me? Thank y'all.
Thank you. Ms. Bush, I just got to say I love you shoes.
Oh, thank you.
I think we might make that a district requirement. I'm wearing mine. We'll put that in the dress code for this year. Alright. Ms. Miller?
Well, hello everyone. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Denise Miller, and it's my pleasure to serve as the principal of Bamberg at Hart Middle School. The start of the school year has been so smooth. Every time I say that, I have to knock on wood. But it's, I'm very thankful to our staff and our students and our parents for the smooth, smooth start. So our current enrollment is 180, and you have the discipline report in front of you. I would say that August was a pretty good month. We recently transitioned from MAP testing to iReady diagnostic testing. At the time that I created this document, it was in progress. We have concluded testing. However, we are waiting from, for some onsite professional development. That team will be here in two weeks, and they are going to help us aggregate the data and make determinations about where we're going. So I will bring that before you at another meeting. We have some upcoming events. Our annual Title I parent meeting will be held tomorrow night or tomorrow afternoon at 4:30. And following that meeting, we will have our open house and Title I parent engagement night from 5:00 to 7:00. I hope that you are able to attend or just come out and visit for a little while. Then on Friday, September the 26th, we will have our school improvement council meeting at 7:30 AM. I hope that parents could drop kids off and then come on in for a little while and learn some information about the middle school. It is my pleasure to present our new staff members. First, we have Mrs. Rentsch. Would you please stand? Mrs. Rentsch is no stranger to Bamberg County School District, but she decided to make it official, and she is now a seventh grade social studies teacher. Next, we have Ms. Sarah Villanueva. Please stand. She had a dynamic interview. She comes with 10 years of experience in teaching science and theater. And that concludes my report.
Any questions for Ms. Miller? Thank you, Ms. Miller. And last but not least, Mr. Smith.
Good evening to everyone.
Good evening.
I don't know if this is by accident, but sometimes they do save the best for last. Great to greet you from Bamberg Yard High School. Item number five, I'm skipping around a little bit. Item number five, enrollment, we're at 384. That's about 41 students higher than we ended last year. Discipline, item number six, 22 incidents. Denise says she had a good August. I would like for you to define what good is, but that's about par for the course for a full month of discipline. No major concerns, starts of the year. Sometimes you want to start it off right. Student achievement, item number one, progress reports were issued September 5th. We've already had an open house on the 27th of August. Item number two, a focus on attendance. Bamberg Yard High School as a whole, we're beginning to focus on improving our attendance. You can look at it as improving attendance or raging a war against accentism. But regardless, we got to get the kids in class. A small but important part of this initiative came to fruition at our Garnet and Black Award Ceremony, August 28th, at which we recognized our third quarter and fourth quarter perfect attendance. And while that seems like a little thing, that's a very, very intentional step to trying to incentivize and recognize good attendance in the classroom. Item number four, track and field recognition. Coach Travis Wilson is not here because he's also coaching football, and I dare not open the plaque with him not being present. But we wouldn't like to acknowledge when May 15th, 2025, our girls won a track team, won the state championship. It is my first state championship, not last, but as a principal, and I'm very proud of that. And we wrote a resolution that will hang in Bamberg Yard High School until we get a few more and beyond. And last but not least, I would like to acknowledge our new teachers at Bamberg Yard High School. In the English department, we are so excited about his energy, Mr. Rafi Pedroza. Social studies, Ms. Jacqueline Gallagher. Health sciences department, replacing Ms. Huber who retired. And we didn't skip a beat with this one, Ms. Vicky Whitaker. Ms. Arjolyn Villamore is coming to us from the Philippines. She should be arriving next week. She is not here right now. And last but not least, I would like to acknowledge that we do have a new guidance counselor. She's not new to the district but new at Bamberg Yard High School. And that is Ms. Jasmine Medlin, transferring from Richard Carroll Elementary School.
Excuse me, what, Ms., what is it, Villamore?
Yes, this is.
What is her subject area?
Ms. Villamore is science. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Once again, I'd like to, like to welcome all the new staff members to our school district. We appreciate y'all's service. You have, I don't know if it's a good thing or a bad thing, but we have several former educators on this board. Sometimes that can be a bad thing, but we welcome you, we're here to support you. And we are very, very pleased that y'all are with us. And I just want you to know, as chairman of the board, if there's anything that we can do for you, please don't hesitate to reach out to us and let us know how we can help. Thank you principals for your reports. I know everybody is tired, got up at the crack of dawn. And unlike y'all, most of us on the board are retired and so we didn't have to get up at the crack of dawn. So, feel free that if you need to leave and go cook dinner or go buy a big chick on your way out of town. Y'all are free to leave, but if you want to stay for the rest of the evening and they're fun, you're welcome to do that. But thank y'all so much for coming.
Music teacher, I'm so grateful you're here.
Awesome.
She's great.
I've heard that you're the
I think she needs to stay, I think she really needs to stay.
Miss it.
Don't, don't run off quite yet. All right, thank you. Next up, Mr. Williams with our athletic report.
Good evening, how's everyone doing today?
Very good.
Our fall sports been going on for about three weeks, so there's not a poll lock report on. From Banburg, our volleyball team and football team both undefeated. Volleyball's four and oh, football's three and oh. Tennis team's three and one and they're actually playing Colvin County right now. Denmark volleyball is two and one and the football is one and two. And Banburg and Denmark volleyball play each other tomorrow night in Banburg, y'all. The homecoming for Denmark is October the third, which is less than a month away, and Banburg is October the seventeenth. And we have moved the Banburg-Denmark football game, it's supposed to be on Halloween night, the thirty-first, we have moved it to the thirtieth. So, it'll be on that Thursday night instead of that Friday night. Try not to, just with security and making sure trick-truthers can be covered and football games can be covered. Any questions? Yes.
Tell me what's going on with the physical, the president's physical fitness thing, are y'all already starting to talk about that or?
No ma'am, we are not starting to talk. I have seen something in the news about it, that we're trying to start it back, but we have not gotten anything from the state, or I have not gotten anything from the State Department about it or anything like that.
Okay, I was just, I heard the buzz and read a little bit about it and I said, well, we find out, we've already, okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you, Ms. Williams. All right. Next up is our staff and student recognition and superintendent's report, Mr. Ulmer.
I've got several pager here. Good afternoon, everybody, hope y'all have a great afternoon. Got a couple things going on here this morning, or this afternoon, I don't even know what time of day it is. I'd like to welcome our new hires, most of them just walked out the door. With two hours, I'd like to know my door is always open. If you're happy, if you need anything, just come over and see me, we'll do what we can do. I'd also like to acknowledge Banburg County School District's Golden Apple Award winners on August the eighth. We had two outstanding educators from Banburg County School District recognized by Channel Ten. They were awarded the News Channel Six Golden Award, Apple Award, which has been recognizing exceptional teachers since about nineteen ninety-three. Those teachers are recognized and they are nominated by students. We actually had Ms. Amy Stimbidge, who's a seventh and eighth grade E.L.A. teacher at Banburg Airheart Middle School, recognized. We also had Master Sergeant Barry Leveretter from, who's a JRO, JRO T.C. instructor at Denmarkola High School, he was also recognized. Both of them were completely surprised, neither one had any idea what was going on, we went in and, and Ms. Miller called a big powwow in the middle of the hall and all the kids thought they were in trouble and then we got, it was, it was a good time. And we caught Master Sergeant in his, in his pad and they were running drills with his kids. It was, it was something to behold watching those kids and watching them take orders as he, you know, he would move them around inside the classroom. And the discipline that those kids have already this early in the year is pretty impressive, watching those guys work. We're also proud of our twenty-five, twenty-six teachers of the year. Last Friday, which was September the fifth, Banburg County School District awarded our school level teacher of the years, teacher of the year. In recognition of outstanding educators, I'd like to take a moment to commend the following individuals who have been selected by their colleagues and peers at their respective schools. And let's see here, is Ms. Sabrina Lawson in here? She's not, okay, so she was the Richard Carroll Elementary School Teacher of the Year.
What was her name again?
Sabrina Lawson. For Banburg Airheart Middle School.
What school was that with this Lawson?
Richard Carroll Elementary School.
Okay.
For Banburg Airheart Middle School is Ms. Alicia Downey. I don't see her in here tonight either. It was a short notice for these ladies though, because we didn't find out until Friday, Friday and we notified them this morning. Banburg Airheart High School, Ms. Vanessa Glover-Robinson, and I know I saw her walk into here, she's in here. She got mad with us because we interrupted a quiz she was taking. So, we hurried up and got out of there. Denmarkola Elementary School, Ms. Wanda Jones Naveen.
Well deserved.
Yes, it is, yes, it certainly is. I'll say that Ms. Naveen's scores on, you guys got a copy of some of the scores from Denmarkola Elementary School last year for her South Carolina ready scores and they threw the roof, she's doing an excellent job over there, we really proud of her.
Awesome.
Denmarkola Middle School, Ms. Maddie Jamison, I did not see her in here tonight, but we certainly congratulate her. And for Denmarkola High School, we have Ms. Jennifer Sanders. All these exceptional educators exemplify dedication, passion and the commitment to student success. Each is now advanced to the next stage of the selecting, selection process as they prepare to compete for the Banburg County School District Teacher of the Year, okay? So, once again, I'd like to congratulate all of those, those ladies.
Thank you all.
Before, and y'all are welcome, I guess, to leave at this point, but before you go, I'd like to congratulate all y'all, but I want to say this. Ms. Robinson, I raised Ms. Robinson from a pup. Back in nineteen ninety-five, ninety-six, I believe, she came to Black Hill High School when I was a teacher. And Ms. Robinson and I worked together for a lot of years. She also worked in my alternative school for a lot of years. And I know what kind of teacher she is. And I understand that you're like a working retiree now, Ms. Robinson, congratulations for that. We appreciate, one, you staying and, two, I want to congratulate you on being Teacher of the Year for Banburg Airheart High School. I just had to say that because I did raise her, so a lot of the credit should be mine, so if you get any money from this class.
And I'd like to thank you for doing a good job because I stole her from you when I was the principal here.
Yeah, and I'm still a little bit mad about that.
Oh, that's all right, I'm sure.
She said she had to go and so I don't even know. Ms. Robinson, you go ahead and leave now, I mean. Congratulations to all of you ladies, thank y'all so much for y'all's service.
All right, with that being said, I'm gonna introduce my Banburg County School District Technology Staff. And I have Mr. Ricky Paget, who's our technology director, sitting in the back right here. Mr. James Strickland, who's the Assistant Technology Director, he's not here tonight, but once again, I don't know what we would do without James. Charlotte Slant, who's also, she's the instructional technology coach, she wears all kinds of hats, she does all kinds of things. She's another one that this district could not operate without, she is fantastic. Mr. Shaquita Johnson, technology assistant, okay? Tommy Williams, who's not here tonight, he's been on board with us a while too, we're glad to have him. Landon Stanfield is a part-time technology assistant and he has been, once again, been lots of help too, fantastic help as a matter of fact. And Mr. Paget said it's good to have you on the back as part of that group. Because Ricky's getting like me, he's getting where he don't like dirt stuff around, getting a little bit old, long in the tooth. But once again, we'd like to thank all of those and what they do for our technology department and what they do supporting the rest of the school district and helping things run here smoothly. I'm not going to allow Ricky to leave, he's got to stay.
Is Ms. Tucker on that?
Ms. Tucker is not, she's not part of our technology staff.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But I don't know what we would do without Ms. Tucker, I can assure you of that. Guarantee you. Student family condolences, on a more somber note, we did have a student pass, it's a deep sadness that I shared a passing with Denmarkola High School student. On behalf of the Banburg County School District, I extend our heartfelt condolences to the student's family, friends, classmates and entire Denmarkola school community. We know this loss is deeply felt and we're keeping everyone affected in our thoughts through this difficult time. Support services are available to any student or staff as we agree together to honor the memory of this student. It's always terrible to lose a student.
Yes, it is.
Move on to our district test scores. You'll find in your board packet a three-year summary of our test scores for South Carolina ready, South Carolina pass, ELC and career readiness assessment. If you have any questions about that, I'd be glad to try to answer just as I can, it's pretty straightforward.
I don't think I have. Oh, wait, I just, I guess I do, I'm sorry.
You can go online onto the State Farm Education and find all kinds of numbers, because right here it doesn't count. It does show growth over the past three years. There are some dips, but not many, but over, for the most part, I feel like this district is moving in a positive and evolutionary direction, which is what we want to see.
Ms. Ulmer?
Yes, ma'am.
The scores really did look much better, I'm proud of all the hard work everybody's putting in.
There's a lot of hard work going on. I did post on our social media page last week, thanking the community and the teachers and the students, you know, everybody's involved in all the hard work. I wanted to wait, I talked to Mr. Porter, he said, no, if we got good news, we want to share.
Yeah, that's right.
And I thought that was good news, so.
Yeah.
Yes.
Great.
And I also think it was a great idea to share that on Facebook, that, I thought that was a really good thing to do.
Well, we catch enough about the things that go on here sometimes, it's not great.
Right.
We certainly want to acknowledge the things that we do here that are great.
Absolutely.
We want people to know about it. All right, so you also have a district e-learning plan, you've got the state e-learning plan. We got together and our district also came up with our own, with our district learning plan, it is aligned with state. E-learning plan, as you know, we only get five per year. Okay, if we have inclement weather that may have a negative impact on, on internet or electricity, we cannot use those days as an e-learning day. So, we talked about that in our, in our plan, about how we go about handling e-learning days here. You can make up an e-learning day on a day that you have earmarked as an inclement weather day. So, if we have an inclement weather day, kids could stay home and we could have an e-learning day on that day rather than bringing kids into school, okay? And as you remember, we have four inclement weather days going into our schedule this year, so we get an extra one this year. Hoping to head off into potential bad weather and knock on wood, things so far have gone pretty smoothly. If you have any, if you read through and you have any questions about it, you know, let me know and I'll, I'll do my best answer as possible.
Excuse me?
Yes, ma'am.
Can I ask a question?
Ma'am.
This is also on page four, communication prior to an e-learning day. It is recommended that the district publish e-learning day expectations for students, parents and teachers regarding items such as communication and troubleshooting. So, would that be like an apparent handful that might have gone home at the beginning of the year?
Yes, ma'am, or if you posted online, so that they're aware of what's going on, what we need to do.
I'm concerned that not everybody might think to look online, but.
Well, and we're really hoping that if we have a weather day, or at least a weather day that we're able to prepare them, you know, before that happens too, which is a good thing. Any type of rainstorms, we have plenty of time to prepare.
And did it say that the teachers were not really supposed to use packets?
Amen, we're going away from written packets.
They can show videos, I think, and they can, can a teacher sit in front of a camera and just talk to her class, give a lecture, I mean?
Lecture, I mean, that's one thing they can use, it wouldn't be very, I wouldn't think it would be the best.
No, but they could, or they could explain or do an experiment, you know, a science experiment or something.
And it's asynchronous, so it's not, it's not real time, you know, so your kids have some leeway as to when they're able to get on.
That's great.
If any work is, you know, the district's required.
That's great, very good, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Okay. Move on. Parent Engagement Initiative, My Power Hub. And most of you will be purchasing My Power Hub. As discussed by Board of this year, parent engagement remains a district priority. To support this effort, the district's purchased My Power Hub, a district-wide platform. It integrates with Power Schools, provide families with an enhanced and user-friendly experience. The installation was completed on Friday, August twenty-ninth. We have training that is going to take place in the coming weeks. Once that training is started, employee training is started, we'll have a better idea when the system will be fully operational. That is something that Ms. Tucker does, that you were asking about earlier, so this is one of her, in her wheelhouse. And she's talked about, she says that we'll soon, parents will soon receive detailed instructions on how to sign up. And for those who are listening tonight, please note that if you already have Power School login credentials, no additional sign up or no additional sign up will be required. So, you'll use those same credentials to access My Power Hub. Which I would think, I do believe that a majority of our kids, the students already have, parents already have. South Carolina School Board Association delegates for the twenty-five delegate assembly. The South Carolina School Boards Association Annual Business Meeting will be held on Saturday, December sixth, twenty-twenty-five. Under the rules of delegate assembly, Banburg County School District is allotted one official vote. And at this time, I'm requesting the board's direction in appointing a delegate and an alternative delegate to represent our district. So, can you all support that?
All right, do we have any, first, let's see, do we have any volunteers? I think a lot of us are going to the advocacy assembly, so do we have any volunteers to vote?
Volunteer.
I mean, I can, I'll, I'll volunteer.
All right, you'll, you'll be the delegate, voting delegate, and an alternate.
Okay, I'll be.
No, I'm just looking, I'm just looking in your direction. I looked over in that direction and now I'm looking over in this direction.
I'll be there, so that's fine.
You won't be the alternate?
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, that's fine.
Don't, don't hurt, get hurt. Okay.
All right, that's done.
All right.
All right.
And Jessie, you're gonna fill that out. All right, thank y'all, I appreciate that.
All right, we'll move on to item ten. South Carolina School Board Association Accidental Death and Disamendment Policy. Certainly not something we want to think about, but included in your packet is the annual list of coverages under the South Carolina School Board Association's Accidental Death and Disamendment Policy with each of your individual benefi- beneficiary list. Please give your information, if any updates to your beneficiaries are needed, please contact Ms. Jessica Moody.
Excuse me, if there are no changes, do we have to fill this out?
There are no changes, you're good to go. Okay? Uh, number eleven. South Carolina School Board Association Boardmanship Training Remind, Reminder. I'd like to remind each of you that the South Carolina School Board Association, uh, will hold its Basics of Boardmanship Training on Wednesday, September seventeenth, twenty-twenty-five, from two to four-thirty, right here in this building, be right in this room.
Two to four-thirty.
Two to four-thirty, yes, ma'am. All board members are encouraged to attend.
What was that date?
That is the seventeenth, September seventeenth. And you should have in front of you Bamberg County School District.
Oh, yeah.
Beta form. I have to find, uh, you will see that as of nine-three, twenty-twenty-five, there's one thousand seven hundred and seventy-nine students enrolled at Bamberg County School District.
So, did we, excuse me, so did we lose students between August, did, did they just not show up, or?
Not showing up, uh, we've had several withdraw.
Okay.
Um, lots of times at the beginning of the school year, uh, you have kids who move around a good bit, and, uh, I think some of our neighbors up north don't start school quite as early as us. I think some of those kids move and, and enroll and leave us, so.
A lot of times they come in after Labor Day.
Right, yeah. Is there any questions for Ms. Ulmer?
I have a question about, um, I think it was End of Course Testing, and I don't remember why I wrote it down here, but.
Okay.
Is three the minimum passing grade?
Three the minimum passing grade for?
End of course. End of course.
Uh, I think you might be talking about, um, AP, talking about AP, Chris?
I don't know, there was something where we talked about three, and I just, is that the?
I think that's the AP.
Is, is that the?
That's AP.
Okay.
A sixty is, uh, passing for the end of course.
You gotta have a C or better to get counted on ELCs. So, you gotta have a seventy or better now on ELCs to get credit for this, in terms of the school report card.
That's for the school report card, but actual, you know, the grading scale is, uh, is sixty and above is passing. And so technically, sixty and above would be passing the end of course test, however, the state doesn't see it that way. Uh, it's seventy, a, a C or above for the report card.
Right.
Okay.
State only counts an ELC score if it's seven or better towards your school report card.
And that's like twenty percent of the grade.
It's twenty percent of your grade, yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm, Ms. Ulmer, I did have a, a, a question. So, um, for the e-learning days, so are we, are we still, like, everybody still gets a, a tablet, or, uh?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
And are we, like, do we do, uh, like, training for them on how to access everything for e-learning days?
They use those tablets on a daily basis pretty much in classes.
But we, but we don't do any, like, I guess, special training for the students or parents specifically about, for the e-learning days?
Uh, not for, not for the parents, no, ma'am. Um, do we do anything special, is you aware of, Mr. Paget?
Not for the parents, no, ma'am. Um, the students are using the devices on a daily basis, um, they're also used to using their LMS in class, uh, Google Classroom. So, they're comfortable in using this daily throughout the school year, in case we do have inclement weather and we go to an e-learning day or whatever.
So, they're just told to, that they would essentially just go to their landing page or to whatever they have their homework place, to be able to see their assignments?
Contact with their teacher, and she'll be giving the directives on how to do all that, yes, ma'am. And also, it's K through eight that keep, um, the, K through eight keep their Chromebooks at school in their homeroom. Now, our nine through twelve classes, they take them home for due enrollment and everything else.
Right.
Okay, thank you. Is that new for K through eight?
Is it new for K through eight?
To keep their Chromebooks at home?
Uh.
Last year, didn't some of the elements?
Last year, um, we were going to keep them at school, and we ended up sending them home because of getting into school year. Uh, we had so much, so many, um, tablets damaged, uh, and last year we recovered with insurance, uh, and then this year that ends. Um, and also, we had some issues last year when students get on inappropriate websites at home, because we don't have the same filters at home that we do at school, and we had some issues where kids were like, they, they all not be able to connect, so. Um, the team got together and decided we thought it would be best, after we topped our approach schools, um, if we, if the high school kids continue to take theirs home, they'll make, little better decisions. A lot more of the schoolwork is involved, you know, the parent EOC, I will do it on the classes and such a lot of that on the computer, so.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. And I think that brings me to our high school elected textbook selections. Mr. Porter, you ready to begin installing that?
Yes, please, by all means.
Okay, we have several books that, uh, that needs the Board's approval. Um, these textbooks are currently in use. Um, that's Theater One, textbook is McGraw-Hill, um, Theater and Art in Action, uh, of course, Reason in Mathematics. That textbook is Thinking Mathematically, eighth edition. Um, Food Nutrition, um, Food Nutrition for You. Um, of course, Bakery and Pastry, that book is Professional Baking, sixth edition. And then Personal Finance Literacy, that book is Personal Finance Literacy, first edition. Uh, just need you guys, textbooks, uh, need your word, y'all's approval for use of these textbooks.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, you've heard the Superintendent's recommendation for the high school elected textbook selections, what is the pleasure of the Board?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I'll make a motion that we approve the selected course books, or in textbooks as presented.
Okay, thank you. I have, I have a motion, uh, from Ms. Eccles and a second from Ms. Bamberg, uh, any discussion?
I have a question, is this for, uh, both high schools?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. If that's, if that high school has that course, they use that rule.
Uh, what, um, how is Theater One used? That's interesting.
Just as an elected at this point, I, um, I wish I could give you more on that, and I can, just not right now.
Okay.
I can find out more information if I.
And Personal Financial Literacy?
It's a state-required course now.
That's, to me, very important.
Yes, ma'am.
Does, could you please remind us, I know we've talked about this, but I'm sorry, I don't remember, what grade do they take that course in, is it a half of a unit, or?
Personal Finance Literacy, it's a high school level, it could be any.
Oh, any high school grade, okay.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
Is it for, like, a whole unit, or?
It is a, is a.
It's like one semester, or?
It, it is a one semester class, yes, ma'am.
The young lady who's gonna be teaching the theater class, right, in conjunction with something else, and I forget which it was, is she gonna be just in Bamberg? Is that not?
Yes, ma'am.
Is she, just in Bamberg, so they won't have theater in Denmark?
No, ma'am. We don't have a certified teacher there. It's my.
Which, uh, which ones of these did you say we already are, we're currently using?
All of them.
Were you, so none of these are brand new, these are ones we've previously used, okay, okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And the teachers proposed that these be continued as their test.
That's right, that's the theater ones you select, yes, ma'am.
All right, we have a motion and a second, uh, and our questions have been answered. All those in favor, say, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hear none, motion passes. All right, next on the agenda is request for out-of-state overnight trip, uh, under A, Bamberg Airheart and Denmark Ola High School Agriculture FFA Program, Sunbelt Agricultural Expo, and the Abraham Baldwin Agricultural College Tour in, uh, Multretifte, Georgia, October fifteenth and sixteenth, twenty-twenty-five. Uh, and also, the National Young Farmer Educational Association, the Fifty-Ninth Institute Professional Development in Nashville, Tennessee, on December tenth and thirteenth, and that is a.
It's a P U request.
Professional development request, okay, Mr. Ulmer?
Yes, sir. All right, so the Bamberg and Denmark Ag FFA programs are, are asking to go to the, the Sunbelt Ag Expo, uh, and Abraham Baldwin Agricultural College on October fifteenth. Uh, they're coming back on the sixteenth, out-of-state overnight. Um, so this is, this field trip, so to speak, is a little different than most of our field trips. Uh, they are raising some money, but they're not raising all of it. Uh, there's about eight-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars that, that they're asking the district to pay now. Uh, this program is a little unique to our district, and that is, is that we have a contract with Clemson University, uh, for these folks. And part of our, the contract, uh, the requirements of that contract is, is that they do attend some of these events. Uh, these two events that you see before you are both events that they are required to, to attend. Um, so, and that's why they're asking, uh, for, you know, about eight-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars for the, um, the field trip. And the professional development, uh, is just for Ms. Bailey Martin, uh, who's the ag teacher in Denmark. Uh, the funds for that is paid for out of our CTE, um, fund, so we have money for that, through our, through CTE, through CTE, I'm having a hard time speaking, I'm sorry. So, there's a little bit of information about those two, uh, events, like, the first one's a field trip that includes students, you got a list of the students, you got the itinerary, you got everything in front of you. And the second one is a professional development, um, opportunity for Ms. Martin, so I'm asking you, y'all's, um, to give us a little bit of guidance on how you move forward with this.
So, Ms. Hurst, do you have a question?
Yes, sir. Um, they have listed that they expect fifty-five students to go.
Just Bamberg and Denmark kids.
Yeah, I'm very bad at math, I didn't get quite that many, are they planning to add a few more, maybe?
Well, they, um, I assume so.
Okay. But like them, I got thirty-six. I got thirty-two. It doesn't matter, but I just got way too many.
And so, where are the, um, funds coming for, like, the additional eight-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars, uh, where are those funds coming from, and do we have that for them?
I'm looking phone first.
I forget I can talk. Um, we are gonna figure that out, because Phyllis and I talked, and we have to take, they have to go, um, because of Clemson, so. And they don't know that they're gonna actually need the whole eight-twenty-five, they are raising money, so I'm hoping they don't need quite the eight-twenty-five, but we will figure, we'll figure something out.
And the, the Clemson, this is the, uh, the program that the students start in in ninth grade to participate and be able to, to, uh, go, or what Clemson program is this specific?
So, this is actually Clemson, hey, okay, so our two ag teachers are two-hundred-and-forty-day employees, and Clemson pays us part of their salaries. So, they have to do additional items, do additional duties through Clemson, um, and each year, they pay part of their salary.
Okay, thank you.
Well, this is the agriculture and FFA program, Bamberg and Denmark, which is a very popular program in both, on both campuses.
Okay. You've heard the recommendation from the interim superintendent, what's the pleasure of the Board?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I recommend, uh, that we approve the request for the field trip.
Thank you.
And the professional development request.
Okay, thank you, we have a, uh, we have a motion from Ms. Hurst.
I'll say it now.
Coming from Ms. Coker, and a second from Ms. Griffith, uh, to approve these two trips. Is there any discussion or further discussion? None, all those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, hear none, and passes.
It's me again.
Not gonna let you say that.
It's me again, all right, so we've got, uh, item ten is the second reading of Bamberg County School District Policies, Section G Personnel. Uh, we came to the Board last month with several policies concerning professional staff leave and absences and sick bank, um, that we were mandated by the state to create. Uh, those policies are, um, GCC, GCCR, which is, GCC is Professional Staff Leave and Absences, so we changed ninety to a hundred and twenty days of accumulated days. Uh, GCC dash R was the same thing, uh, Professional Staff Leave and Absences, uh, we changed the verbage to ninety to a hundred and twenty days. GDC, Support Staff Leave and Absences, once again, ninety to a hundred and twenty days. Okay, and then we had the new, um, policies, GCCA A A, that was the Sick Leave Bank Program. We had GCCA A dash R, Sick Leave Bank Program. We had the GCCA A A dash E, Sick Leave Bank Program. And we had the GCCA A A dash E, number one, Sick Leave Bank Program. So, those were, uh, all brought to you, um, last month, and we're bringing them back to you again tonight for the second reading.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ulmer. You've heard, uh, the recommendation from the interim superintendent concerning these policies, what is the pleasure of the Board?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm going that the, um, Board approved all of these policies that are either new or updates. They are GCC, GCCR, GDC, GCCA A A, GCCA A A R, GCCA A A E, and GCCA A A E dash one.
Okay, thank you, we have a motion from Ms. Hurst, do I have a second?
Second.
We have, okay, we have a motion and a second from Ms. Coker, uh, is there any discussion? None, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hear none, motion passes. All right?
All right, so item eleven, we had some policies because we moved locations, because our building changed the physical address and the phone numbers. We had to go in and update them, uh, according to the South Carolina School Board Association. So, tonight, you're gonna see those for the first reading as well, and all that was changed in those policies was the physical address and the phone number, okay? So, that is Bamberg County School District, uh, Policy Section A, Foundations and Basic Commitments. Uh, A is AC, nondiscrimin- nondiscrimination, equal opportunity, and B, ACE, which is the Service Animals. Uh, once again, both of those, the Admin Office Address and the Telephone Number were changed in those two policies, nothing else. Those are for you tonight for a first reading.
Okay, thank you. So, you've heard the recommendation from the interim superintendent, what is the pleasure of the Board?
Madam Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I move that we approve, um, the policy update recommended on the first reading for AC and ACE.
Okay, thank you, we have a motion from Ms. Hurst to approve these two policies for first reading, do we have a second?
Second.
So, we have a second from Ms. Bunch, what's the, is there any discussion? Hear none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hear none, motion passes. Thank you.
Okay, item twelve, uh, we have a first reading for Bamberg County School District Policy Section. We have a first reading for Bamberg County School District Policy, Section D, School Board Governance and Operations. As you are aware, it is now required that board meetings be live streamed. We've been doing that for quite some time, however, with some guidance from the Sycamore School Boards Association, we have implemented this policy, or we're going to implement this policy, but you guys are y'all's blessing for the live streaming of our board meetings. We've spent a good bit of money on, on some new equipment to make that more, more easily available to those outside to be able to hear and see. We have new cameras in here as well, so once again, I need you guys' blessing for the first reading.
Okay, thank you. You've heard the recommendation from the interim superintendent, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to make a motion that we approve the first reading of BEA, live streaming of board meetings.
Okay, thank you, we have a motion from Ms. Bunch.
Second.
We have a second from Ms. Hurst for the approval for first reading of BEA, live streaming board members' meetings. Is there any discussion? Hear none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hear none, motion passes.
May I say something?
Yes, ma'am, you may.
I just wanna say thank you to those people who have made this possible, because I think that is one of the most outstanding things we've done for our community for those who can't come. There's no reason they can't stay tuned in, they could play it back at their leisure. If they can watch it live, that's even better. But I am most grateful that our district has accepted this and has been using it for quite some time.
I'd like to second that motion, we have the best IT team anywhere.
Yes, sir, yes, ma'am, I concur.
We gotta give us some bigger headphones if y'all keep that up. All right, we are ready to move on to thirteen, Section D. First reading Bamberg County School District Policy, Section D, Fiscal Management. This is DKC dash R, Expense Authorization Reimbursement. We are updating this policy, if you look, you can check your policy under mileage. The second paragraph under mileage, any employee travels out of the district for any reason. It used to say must secure the approval of their immediate supervisor. However, we have changed, or we are recommending we change that to follow the designated district procedure in its place, because anytime that somebody travels out of district, it requires more than an immediate supervisor, financial approval, finance approval, board approval, et cetera. So we would like for, we, they must follow the designated district procedure versus must secure the approval of their immediate supervisor.
Okay, and those procedures have been outlined for the schools, what they're supposed to do?
That is correct.
Okay, you've heard a recommendation for the first reading of DCSD, Fiscal Management. DKC, the Administrative Rule, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I move the approval of the first reading for DKC dash R, Expense Authorization slash Reimbursement.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Bamberg, we have a motion from Ms. Bamberg.
Second.
And we have a second from Ms. Eccles. Is there any discussion?
Yes, I have two questions.
Okay.
I was just wondering, is, is the cost of a motel room during a conference like the School Board Association conferences, if there are two people, is the cost the same as if there's one person? If two people, my husband has been going to some of these association meetings with me, and I don't know, can you?
It's me, go ahead.
I just, if there has been, if it's cost more, I need to know that.
No, 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 no. It costs, so what they normally do is they do a block of rooms.
Right.
And they get a rate for that block of rooms, and so it doesn't matter.
Right.
If your husband goes, or your grandchildren go, whoever, the rate's gonna be the same.
Okay, thank you, thank you. And I have another question, too. The designated district policy will be that we have to get permission to go, so I don't think we've, I mean, once we've registered, we're
Or does it get permission to go? Y'all just, she don't gives y'all like a
Right, the deal.
Something from school boards that y'all pick the conferences that y'all like to attend, and then she takes care of getting y'all registered for those conferences.
Okay, I thought, oh.
It's more so there's a procedure in place for teachers that wanna go to staff development, or A, or whoever needs to go, or even our office.
I just wondered if we were, maybe, I wasn't doing right.
No, 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 you're doing, you're fine.
Okay, good, thanks.
Any other questions? All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hear none, motion carries.
Okay, all right, first reading of item fourteen, first reading of Bamberg County School District Policies, Section G Personnel. We have several of these too that are once again changing the administrative office addresses and telephone numbers. GBA, Open Hiring Equal Opportunity, Equal Employment Opportunity. GBAA dash R, Sexual Harassment and Retaliation Staff. CGBAC dash R, Discrimination, Harassment, and Retaliation Staff. And GBAA, Service Animals Staff. Those, the only change to those is the office address and telephone number. Now, for GCLE and policy GCLE dash R, those deal with unencumbered time. This year, we were dismanded, now that nurses also receive unencumbered time. And if you look at those policies, GCLE, you will see that every time that a teacher is listed, and for, school nurses are added in addition to teachers. So they will also be getting unencumbered time. That's a thirty-minute time during the day when they don't have any other, no students, no anything, just to have a break, so.
It would be my honor to be able to speak on that.
Okay.
Being a former teacher, I have lots to say about that, so Mr. Chair, I would love for the board to accept the policy updates. GBA, GBAA dash R, GBAC dash R, update. GBGAA, GG, GCLE, GCLE dash R.
Okay, thank you, we have a motion from Ms. Griffith. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Ms. Griffith, and a second from Ms. Bamberg, and I think Ms. Coker.
Draw mine.
Any discussion?
I have a question.
Okay.
Okay. There is a listing on the first page of the, what constitutes unencumbered, what cannot be considered unencumbered time? It does not mention lunch. Is the thirty minutes, are they allowed to have lunch during that thirty minutes? Is that, or do they have an extra lunchtime?
They have thirty minutes, this in addition to lunch, I think is right.
Okay, 'cause it doesn't mention lunch. They can't have parent-teacher conferences, bus duty, IEPs?
Right, no responsibilities during that thirty-minute time.
So the lunches?
No supervision of kids, so, and so it goes back to elementary school teachers. During lunch, they have to supervise kids, so they have thirty minutes. Aside from that, where they have no additional, or no supervisory roles.
I was just surprised it didn't mention lunch there. And also, I noticed that this is also for even up to high school teachers who teach special ed. Self-contained, I think, pull-out special ed.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Olmer, so for, as far as the school nurses are concerned, are there other nurses that, or will there be another nurse? Or will there be just another certified person that would be able to, I guess, stand in for them during those thirty minutes? Or how does that work?
If there's an emergency, then we probably would just put their thirty-minute time back to something else. Most of our office staff has been trained to maybe give medicine. Some of our schools, we have more than one nurse in. Our Denmark campus, we have multiple nurses on that campus, or on those campuses. Rich Carolina Mitchell School, we have two nurses on that campus. Bamberg Garden Middle School, we have one. If, you know, if something came up, we would be able to, yes, ma'am, we would work around.
Yeah, that's addressed in the policy.
Yes. All right.
I did notice the very last sentence says, "The intentional failure of the board to provide eligible teachers or school nurses, which require thirty minutes of unencumbered time, may be subject, may subject the board to any penalties prescribed by law." So this is on us, and I'm just wanting to make sure that if something happens and it goes screwy one day, you know.
Well, I mean, I think the policy, the policy talks about how, if there's an emergency situation, that unencumbered time, I mean, is gonna have to be something else is going out the app. And of course, you know, a school nurse, you know, in an emergency situation would be obligated by law to, to look after, you know, a child that is, is hurt or is in distress or whatnot.
So this might perhaps really be saying, somebody just forgot to schedule that thirty minutes on a regular basis.
Well, yeah, I mean, it'd be sort of a, a situation in which, okay, well, this is the policy, this is the law, but we ain't on this. We, we just, you know, you just go over here, and this will be your unencumbered time, but if Elroy, you know, needs to come in there and get a Band-Aid, we gonna put the Band-Aid, you gonna have to put the Band-Aid on Elroy. That wouldn't be necessarily an emergency, that could be taken care of by anybody else, a Band-Aid. It's some, it's something that, you know, it keeps, and especially with teachers. And I know a lot of y'all have been teachers, you know, former teachers on the board. Well, you have a planning period, well, your planning period might be fifty minutes, might be an hour and a half, but you spend your planning period sitting in an IEP meeting that's gonna last the whole time, or some, a school improvement council meeting, or you have to meet with, with, you know, an extracurricular activity or something like that. It's to keep those kind of things from happening systematically, that it's gonna, you know, sort of interfere. I mean, you know, teachers work pretty hard, and it's like Mr. Olmer says, you know, an elementary teacher, I mean, they don't have, I mean, the day from, they supervise students from the time they hit the door till the time they go out. And, you know, y'all, a lot of y'all have been there, I mean, you can just imagine having supervised twenty, twenty-five, thirty kids, you know, in a classroom all day. It's tough, it's really tough.
And I guess the answer to my question is, it does say the intentional failure.
Yeah.
So
I think we're safe.
Okay.
I think we are.
We don't get a reporting system.
Yeah, I think, I think what, I think the procedure is, they have to
Has to be scheduled.
Yeah, but what, what, what I'm saying is, district doesn't comply with the employee having unencumbered time, the employee has to make a complaint to the board.
Okay, that makes sense.
Through the great procedure.
There was a time when, when, you know, a woman's got a meeting with parents, oftentimes took up your planning time.
Right.
And then you're rushed to get back to your class, and you got this other class waiting to go in, and you didn't get a chance to look at what the mama sent you, a note or whatever.
Yeah.
And with little ones, you start early in the morning, collecting them off the bus, if you didn't already have to go out there and collect them and bring them in. They're ready to go, you have no time, maybe squeezing a bathroom break. So I'm just delighted that teachers will now have a time where they can just take a breath, go to the bathroom, if they like coffee, drink a coffee, and grade those papers, instead of having that time taken from them. They really work hard.
All right, thank you, okay, we've
Thank you.
I think we've got a motion and a second, is there any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hear none, motion carries.
Okay, item fifteen. First reading Bamberg County School District Policy, Section J, Personnel. This is the first reading. All of these policies, the only update that's being made to them is the administrative office address and telephone number changing. So that's the only thing, the only word that is changing is the addresses and phone numbers. That is JB, Equal Education Opportunity Nondiscrimination. JIAAR, Sexual Harassment and Retaliation for Students. JIAB dash R, Discrimination, Harassment, Retaliation, Students. JIAB dash R, Discrimination, Harassment, and Retaliation. I just said that. JJAB, Limited Open Forum. JLCD, Service Animals for Students. Once again, the only update being made to those policies, those five policies, is that the administrative office address has been changed to our current location, and the telephone number has been changed to our current location.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Olmer, you've heard a recommendation from the interim superintendent regarding these policies. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I make a motion that we approve first reading of policy JB, JIAA dash R, JIAB dash R, JJAB, and JLCD.
Okay, thank you, we have a motion from Ms. Bamberg.
Second.
And we have a second from Ms. Hurst for the approval of these policies, is there any discussion?
I have one.
Yes, ma'am.
This is very minor, but on JIAB dash R, where it says Compliance Officer, that word, those two words are not in italics, but they are in italics on some of the other forms. I don't know if it matters, I just wanted to mention it.
I don't think that really matters as far as the fine, if we just, this is first reading, if you just make the fine correct, then uniformly on both of them, I don't think that has any other. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hear none, motion carries. All right, Mr. Olmer. You did, good, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda is the monthly financial report, Ms. Fur.
Yes.
Good to see you again.
Good to see you.
All right.
This is a long meeting, I need to be moved to the front.
Yes, ma'am, I think so, but
I think so, too.
It's not gonna happen tonight.
No, it's time to go home tonight.
She's in front of the room.
That's right. In your package, you have your financial report. If y'all have gone through it, if y'all have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. If not, you don't wanna ask them in here, you'll more than have to come see me and ask them in my office. I'll be here till y'all go.
Well, Ms. Fur, I would just like to commend you on the detailed financial report. And I think we should, it's, you know, brag on this online, so some other people can see what a detailed finance report is like.
That is transparent, may I ask?
It's very transparent.
Very good.
All right, any questions for Ms. Fur?
We're looking at the price of the school board model.
Oh, I did have a real quick question.
Okay.
I feel like we've talked about this. South Carolina State on page fifteen of sixty.
Fifteen?
Yeah, page fifteen of sixty, so it's like, yeah.
Check register.
Uh, yes, thank you, check, register. The, it's, it's categorized as levy, can you remind me what that is?
So that's a payroll deduction, that is it.
We partially employ somebody, or?
No, 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 no. So like, let's say you didn't pay your South Carolina tax bill.
Okay.
So if you didn't pay it, or you didn't pay a hospital fee.
Okay.
The, they send it to the state of South Carolina, they then send it to us, we levy your wages, and then we pay the state, or any, I mean, we have lots of levies, so, for different places.
Okay.
Child support, we give child support to them, so.
Perfect, okay, thank you, thank you, I appreciate that clarification.
Any other questions for Ms. Fur? All right, hearing the financial report is presented by Ms. All right. Hearing the financial report is presented by Ms. Fur. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I make a motion that we approve the financial report for September twenty twenty-five.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
We have a motion for Ms. Eccles and a second for Ms. Coker to accept the monthly financial report as presented. Is there any discussion? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hear none? Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Fur.
You're welcome.
All right, the next is visitors' comments. No one, it seems, has signed up for visitors' comments. So, our next item on the agenda is executive discuss, look, excuse me, there's something wrong with me. I think I have stroke. There's executive session to discuss interim superintendent evaluation, to discuss recognition of district personnel, to discuss employment personnel matters related to personal, personnel recommendations for hire, personnel recommendations for resignation, and to discuss matters related to the release of students. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I make a motion that we now go into executive session and leave open session to discuss interim superintendent, the interim superintendent's evaluation, the recognition of district personnel, the employment personnel matters related to hire, resignation, and the related release of students.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion from Ms. Eccles. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Ms. Eccles and a second from Ms. Hurst. Any discussion? Hear none. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hear none. We are now in executive session.
All right, members of the board, I'll entertain a motion to exit executive session and enter open session.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to move at this time that we come out of executive session and return to open session.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion from Ms. Hurst to go into open session. Do I have a second?
I second it.
Okay. We have a motion and a second from Ms. Griffith. Is there any discussion? If not, then all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. We are in open session. Actions on the executive session under A, discuss superintendent evaluation. That has been tabled. Discuss recognition of district personnel. That has also been tabled. To discuss employment personnel matters related to hires. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that the board accept the recommendation to hire for personnel recommendation person, letter A.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion from Ms. Hurst. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second from Ms. Coker. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. And it passes. There were no recommendations for resignation. Matters related to release of students. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I make a motion that we approve the release of students one through six.
Okay, we have a motion, thank you Ms. Eccles, from Ms. Eccles, to approve the transfers from one through six. Do I have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second from Ms. Griffith. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Passes. All right. Next on the agenda is board member comments. We're gonna start with Ms. Butch today. Big enough a little bit. Ms. Butch, do you have any comments?
I, I don't actually this evening.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Bamford?
No comments. Thank you.
Ms. Griffith?
No comments.
Okay, Ms. Eccles?
Um, I just wanna again just welcome all of the teachers that are new to our district and, you know, thank them for being here.
Ms. Coker?
Well, I think most of the schools got off to a very smooth start and that's a positive reflection on the teachers, the principals, the administrative staff, Mr. Ulmer. So, um, I just think we're off to a good start.
Thank you, Ms. Coker. Ms. Hurst?
I agree with you, Ms. Coker. Um, thank you to all that have made the school year start so well and I hope it's going to continue just going even better and better. And I also agree with you, Ms. Eccles, it was really nice to meet the new hires, the new teachers and staff members and look forward to them having a wonderful year here. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Sanders go back?
They said it all. No comment.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I, I wanna echo Ms. Eccles and the other board members welcoming the staff, especially the new staff who've come to serve our students. I appreciate them being willing to do a job that is sometimes not very glamorous. And as far as the start of the year, everybody I have talked to, and I've talked to several people asking about how the school year had started, and every one of them has said, knock on wood, it's been the smoothest. One, one young man told me it was the smoothest in 25 years and I think that's just great. So, we're doing big things. We got some good news on our test scores. We're looking forward to hearing some good news in our report cards next month. And so, I appreciate everything that everybody does. Working as a team really makes a difference. All right, the last item on the agenda is to adjourn. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I move that at this time we adjourn this meeting.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion from Ms. Hurst. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Ms. Griffith. All those in favor, any discussion? All those in favor say goodbye.
Goodbye.
And we are adjourned. Thank y'all so much.